Good evening. I'd like to bring to order the regular meeting of the Simsbury Board of Education, June 11, 2013, to order. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Curtis.
Thank you, Lydia. At this time, I'd like to start our meeting this evening by acknowledging the legendary Patty Lou Peters, our longtime vice principal at Henry James Memorial School who passed away last week after a long and brave struggle with cancer. And Patty Lou's impact on our staff and on our entire community will not be forgotten. That's certainly an understatement. And we worked very closely, our central office administrators, with Brian White, the principal, to ensure that all the faculty members who had a desire to attend Patty Lou's service were able to do that. And we attended that service today. It was a beautiful, both sad and celebratory, service where Sue Lemke gave the eulogy and did a wonderful job. And I would just ask those in attendance this evening if we could start our meeting with a moment of silence for Patty Lou. Thank you. And certainly, our goal was to provide as much normalcy as we could for our students during this time, and that is the way Patty Lou would have wanted it. So with that, I'll turn things back to you, Lydia, to start our meeting off.
Absolutely. And you may have noticed here, I have a carnation from the service today, so in memory of our Patty Lou, she is with us, and she will be remembered. All righty, we will move on now to our recognitions.
Great. Thank you. And we have, at this time, I would ask Ernie Goodwin to kind of chauffeur in his wrestling crew out there. We'll wait a minute. There we go. Okay, so this evening, we have Ernie Goodwin, who is a physical education and health teacher at Simsbury High, one of our great teachers and our varsity wrestling coach. And after a very successful wrestling campaign for his team, he is bringing before us tonight three student athletes who have attained academic All-American status. And Ernie, I'll turn things over to you, and we'd like to recognize those students this evening.
Thank you. First, I can't help but to congratulate. I also coached track and field. I don't know if people know that, but this past weekend, we had our thrower, discus thrower, Matty Nicholson, who's sitting back here, win the New England Championships this year. She finished the season unscathed.
Congratulations.
If we did an academic All-American for track and field, she'd be that as well. But I'd like to recognize tonight, three outstanding individuals who really exemplify the ideals of academics and athletics. These guys all carry over a 3.7 GPA, and I'll give their individual GPAs as we go, and also have all placed in the state tournament. These guys are really the cream of the crop when we talk about student athletes. So I couldn't be prouder. Two of them are multi-All-Americans, as they also received this award last year. So the first one is Senior Christian Kylai, who is only a two-year wrestler. We finally talked him out as a junior when I was announcing the football game, and Lon was working next to me, and I said, "Hey, your son's going to be a great wrestler." And he turned to me and said, "What?" So the other guys talked him out on the team, and he went from first-year wrestler to the state finals. And then he backed that up this year, again going to the state finals as well. So he was a two-time runner-up in the Class Double Ls, and he carries a 3.7 GPA. He's going to Union College next year to major in engineering and also play football. So Christian Kylai, congratulations. Next, we have two captains, four-year wrestlers. Both actually were two-year captains. These guys were such outstanding leaders on our squad. And First John carries a 3.8 GPA, and he placed fifth at the Class Double Ls this year and wrestled in the state open tournament. He also is going to major in engineering at UConn. And he also won our perseverance award as well for his toughness and being injured and just persevering through all that stuff. And he's a great kid, John. Our last senior is Senior Captain Ben Durst, also a two-year captain. Ben also was in the finals of the Double Ls and did an outstanding job, placed fifth in the state open tournament. Carries a 4.2 GPA and is also going to major in engineering. So all three of our guys are going to be engineers someday. And he also is retiring as our number-two all-time winning wrestler in history of Simsbury Wrestling, Ben Durst.
Thank you very much. Boys, congratulations on your accomplishments. They're very, very impressive.
Thank you.
And you have your parents in the audience? Boys, you have your parents.
Thank you. You're welcome. The next person I'd like to recognize is certainly a familiar face, and that is Ron Peralt, our principal at Tooton Hills School. And as we know, Ron is retiring at the end of the school year after 21 years in the principalship at Tooton. But we bring Ron forward this evening to recognize him because he was named by the Chamber of Commerce at its annual luncheon, the 2012-13 Educator of the Year, and joins a long list of accomplished educators before him. It was a great event. We had an opportunity to go to a luncheon several weeks ago. Sue, Aaron, myself attended. Lydia had an opportunity to speak about Ron. It was a great little talk. And, you know, I can't capture Ron's impact in the few minutes we have here, but would just want to say that I can't think of another person in our organization who has mentored as many teacher leaders and leaders to go on in both leadership positions, administrative positions, in our own district and in other districts as Ron has. And I think Ron has, of his many abilities, a very unique ability to sense a strength in somebody and set that person up for success by providing them opportunities to really excel and grow in their skills. And it's such a huge, important piece of any organization sustaining excellence over a long period of time. So Ron, thank you for all your accomplishments. I know we're on the retirement circuit and still have a couple of parties left to go. And they've been fun so far, but Lydia, I don't know if you want to add any comments, but congratulations, Ron, and thank you.
Very good. And yeah, Ron, actually, this is your year, and, you know, as I said during the Chamber of Commerce, and along with numerous other presenters and your numerous parties and retirement events, you are a very special person, and you deserve all the best, and your legacy will be left to your students in their hallways and to teachers and families. With that...
Thank you very much. This is the last time I'll be speaking with the board as the principal of Tooton Hills. I just want to tell you that I'm very, very, very touched by the fact that our central office and our board and the chamber bestowed this recognition on me. I'm still a bit stunned by this. I have to share that when I got there and looked at the program and saw the list of people who had received this recognition prior to me, I'm not exaggerating when I say that I was humbled. I really was humbled and continue to be. But I want to thank all of you. I want to thank the whole town of Simsbury. I think the fact that the Board of Education even has an award like this speaks to the real sense of community that exists here. I think the last thing I want to say to all of you as the principal of Tooton Hills is that it's been an absolute privilege to serve as the vice principal of Henry James for a few years, and most especially to be the principal of Tooton Hills, such a fine school, for 21 years. And it'll be the proudest experience of my entire life. And I want to thank each and every one of you and all the board members that preceded for entrusting you with this incredible responsibility. I want to thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Ron. Best wishes in your retirement and your burgish renovated schoolhouse home. Never far away. All right, we are now moving on to another recognition. We have Managing Editor of the Simsbury High School Pinnacle, Matty Nicholson. She'll come forward. Had a busy year this year, Matty, haven't you? Just a bit.
So I have the long-awaited yearbooks, all of you guys.
All right.
Great. Yep, you can pass out and fly your... So Matty, in your spare time, tell us about your managing editor of...
I didn't know you were going to get a Q&amp;A, did you?
Yeah. It looks very impressive. I'm looking forward to reading it. So tell us a little bit about your experience with the yearbook.
Well, once again, I love the new yearbook this year. I think this one is even better than last year's because I have more experience and I was able to catch a little bit of the flaws that I made last year. There are a lot more photos and autograph pages this year, which is what students like. Captains wrote stories for the winter sports and...
That was great.
The JV teams are a part of it, so it should have been much better.
Very nice.
Good, good.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. We'll look forward to reading it.
Thank you.
That's great. Very good. So what are you going to do now, Matty? Are you going to rest since you've completed your yearbook and completed everything?
I have more kind of supplement.
Oh! Of course she is. Of course she is. Okay, thank you. All right, we are now going to, we'll move on to public audience. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the board may do so. Please state your name and address. Nope, not in here. Do you wish to state? Oh, all right. We'll now move on to Board and Administrative Communications.
Feel free.
Yes, absolutely. That's right.
Have a great night. Thank you very much. All right. Yes, Ron can go too, doesn't he?
Yes. Mr. Peralt, you're excused also.
He wants the support.
The person who lives in Tooton Hills is a Tooton Hills teacher, a Tooton Hills parent.
Always supportive.
Always supportive. Always supportive.
There you go.
Great. All right, moving on to...
He's not getting overtime for this, Ernie.
We want to make your last Board of Education meeting a very memorable one. Board of Administrative Communications, Kristen.
Okay, well, first, I just want to say that I went to Tooton Hills for, I think, seven years, so I always thought you were a great principal. And then, well, the year is coming to an end, so finals start next Wednesday, the 19th, and then the day after that is the graduation rehearsal and luncheon. And then the 24th is the last day of school and graduation. And that's pretty much it in high school right now.
All righty, good, good, good. Susan.
Nothing today.
Todd.
All set.
Just to add my comments of thanks to Ron, my family, and particularly my three sons had the honor and privilege of being at Tooton Hills Schools during the whole time that Ron was course's principal. And they also managed to make it all the way through the Simsbury school system, probably because they got such a great start with Mr. Peralt. So thank you so much.
Tara.
Nothing, thank you, but thank you for all of your dedication to our students.
Great. Susan.
All set.
Good.
Just one quick announcement. Pleased to announce that Ms. Cindy Parsons, after a rigorous interview process, has been named our new K-12 Art Supervisor. Cindy is a current teacher at Simsbury High School, has been with us for 15 years, has demonstrated excellence in all aspects of her teaching profession, and we're very fortunate to be able to bring one of our own up through the ranks, as Cindy Rem, another incredibly valuable employee, heads into retirement at the end of this year. So I wanted to share that with the board.
Good, 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 good. And briefly, hot off the press, we had the CAPE legislative wrap-up today. As you know, the budget was passed last week, and on the CAPE website for my fellow board members here is the whole legislative wrap-up with the bills that were passed and all the information that you might be interested in. But basically, we are very pleased that this year, the bills were adopted by the House and Senate, and hopefully we'll have no trouble having the governor sign the bills that were proposed and passed. And education, as you know, is a big priority of the governor's last year and this year, and we're very, very fortunate that the transportation funding was put back in, and all the other funding that is reinstated for all the education reforms that were put forward last year are going to be funded. So more on that. It was a very long legislative season, or it seemed long even though it was a short legislative season, but you will be hearing more as we move forward, because a lot of the bills and the public acts will obviously be affecting all the districts, you know, within the state. So we will keep you posted with that. Administration will be telling us much more as we enter into the new school year with the bills and amendments that will be pertaining to our district. All righty, so moving along. Where's my agenda? Over here. Recommended actions. On Exhibit 1, I just moved it back in here. Do we have approval of minutes for the May 28 special meeting?
All moved.
Second. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Obstain.
Motion passes. Thank you. Exhibit 2, approval of the May 28 regular meeting minutes. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We are on to Personnel, Exhibit 3.
I have two recommendations for your consideration this evening. First is the resignation of Lisa Varian, Special Education Teacher at Simsbury High School, and the second is the resignation of Alexandra Campagnano, Special Education Department Supervisor for Grades 7 through 12. The recommendation is that the Board of Education move to accept the resignation of Lisa Varian, effective June 7, 2013, and the resignation of Alexandra Campagnano, effective June 30, 2013.
Your motion?
All moved. Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We are now on to Exhibit 4, Approval of Superintendent's Contract.
The, just to make sure everybody's up to speed, Matt prepared a self-evaluation, which the board then discussed, and I've prepared an email that is in response to that, but suffice to say that the board is unanimous in its approval of the great year, transitional year, first year that Matt Curtis has had. The feedback was unanimously positive. So I would like to go ahead and make a motion to renew the contract for the following year and approve the superintendent's salary at a level of $183,600, which is consistent with the increases, a 2% increase which we have done across the leadership team. So make that motion.
Second. Any discussion?
I think we've had a great year, and it, you know, it could have gone, it's a lot to take on a new district and to have a new superintendent, and I think it went very smoothly, and I'm pleased to say that. I'm pleased that we're in the position we're in this year going forward.
I agree. Been a quite challenging year, but we got through it, and we're on to year two.
More success in the future.
Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. All righty, we're now on to the approval of the 2013 Building Use Fee Schedule. And Exhibit 5 in your packet.
This is at least the second time you've had a chance to see this, and last time around, we highlighted what some of the areas of change were. It's essentially an average increase of about 1.5% on our fees, rounding that happens. You'll see some slight variation, but this has been our standard practice to try to keep covering our costs for use of our buildings. Any other questions tonight?
Do you hear a motion?
All moved.
Second. Any discussion? Any further discussion? As you know, we had a presentation last time. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We are now on to the 2013 textbook adoption. And Exhibit 6 in your packet.
At our last board reading, I brought forward an environmental science textbook along with a biology textbook for your consideration. There's been no amendments to the original request, so I would recommend that the board consider adoption of these two textbooks for the 2013-14 school year.
Do you hear a motion?
Move that the board approve the textbook adoption for the 2013-14 school year as submitted by the administration.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Motion passes. All in favor. Thank you. Passes. What are those textbooks? All right, we are now on to Exhibit 7, the acceptance of the Latimer Lane PTO gift.
We have a generous donation from the PTO of $9,584 that would be used to add some play structures for the upper school playground. Look forward to working with the PTO to finalize the schedule for this, but just want to thank them for their efforts. And if there's any other questions, I don't believe there's anybody here from the PTO. I don't want to overlook anybody, but...
No. Very good.
Very generous.
That's wonderful. I make a motion that we approve the Latimer Lane PTO gift for playground equipment.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Further discussion? It's very, very generous. We do thank...
Hard work for those PTO people. That's hard earned diamonds and nickels. It's awesome.
Absolutely. And not only is it used by our students, it's used all year long by community members as well. So thank you very much, Latimer Lane PTO. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We are now on to Exhibit 8, the cancellation of the Board of Education's summer meetings. Ready to continue?
Do you want me to make the motion?
We'll make a motion. Yeah, go ahead, make a motion.
Move that the Board of Education cancel regular board meetings scheduled on June 25th, July 9th, July 23rd, August 13, and August 27, 2013.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? As in the past, in policy, we have canceled the meetings right through until the beginning of school. Should there be need for any special meeting for anything that needs to come forward before the board, we will reconvene for a special meeting, but, you know, that happens very rarely, but if so, superintendent and board has authority to do that. With that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Just a reminder to the members of the Personnel Negotiations Committee meeting, or Committee, rather, that this year is a negotiations year, so we will have probably eight meetings.
Yes, yes, yes. Starting when, Mike? Starting when?
Oh, soon.
Starting very soon.
Soon, very soon.
Yeah, absolutely. So, and with that, you know...
We don't give the summer off.
Absolutely. It's a good vacation for board members to kind of re-energize also as they come back into September, except for personnel negotiations. They'll be working straight through. All right, thank you. And we are now on to Information and Reports, the Technology Inflammation Status, and that is Exhibit 9 of your packet.
All right. Tonight, I'd like to invite John C. and Mike, Jason Casey, to the table. We'll be asking others to join us in just a few minutes, but back in late September, we brought forward to you the first preview of our technology initiative, our three-year plan. In December, we gave you an update as well. And so this is the final year-end update, the status to date, and future projected plans as we look forward for the next two to three years. So John C. and Jason have spent a good deal of time working with Merk and myself, reviewing all of the work that has taken place over the course of this year to put together what we think is a pretty thoughtful summary of our work. In addition, we've invited some teachers and others to present some of the work that they've done in their classrooms this year as well. So Merk, I'll pass it on to you.
Just to echo Aaron, we've worked very, very closely with these two, and I want to thank them also and their staff, the staff that worked with them. This was a really challenging first phase of the virtualization project, and while you'll hear a little bit more about some of the issues that they had to deal with, we've met our goals of getting every classroom done, and we're just very pleased with the teacher feedback that we've received about how much care that you took to make sure that it was a smooth process. I just want to thank them and turn it over to them.
And in addition, there may be a few slides at the end that are not viewable to you that we'll have to take a look at when the teachers begin their presentation, but you have the bulk of the presentation available to you. So we'll pass it off to you, Jason.
All right. I'll begin with the client virtualization projects. Just as a review of how we came to this point, we were looking to upgrade to Windows 7 and Office 2010 on our PCs, the bulk of which in the district are running Windows XP and Office 2003. The other task we wanted to take care of was improving PC performance, so our issues of teachers wrestling with slower PCs and not having the kind of PC performance they wanted, but to do so in a sustainable way, so that throughout the years, we can cost-effectively maintain that level of performance. And then, we also wanted to improve our ability to centrally support the network. With virtualization, we can update software, add new software from a central location, and the client PCs in the classrooms can receive those updates and move forward without having to get touched individually. And then finally, we want this to fold into our mobile strategy. We want to be able to provide these desktops to devices such as Chromebooks, iPads, and eventually, remote access, so staff and students will eventually be able to pick up their desktops from remote locations off of our network, so from home. Just a refresher course in virtualization, lest you've forgotten since last we spoke. The traditional way of networking is the desktop PC runs the local operating system, runs the applications, does all the thinking for the programs, but as that PC ages, that's when we run into problems, and we're left with the only option being to replace that PC. In a virtual environment, that processing power, the operating system, the applications, are moved into the server or into our private cloud that we're building, basically a rack of servers. So those servers do all the computing, and at the desktop level in the classrooms, it's just a monitor, keyboard, mouse that's passing signals back and forth to the server. It's not doing the thinking. And there are a lot of advantages to having that happen at the server level. One of the big advantages is that one of those servers can support up to 100 desktop PCs. That's why it's a sustainable way to maintain performance. When we go to do an upgrade, we're upgrading 100 devices, we're upgrading one server, and then they all get the benefit. Our project goals for Phase 1 were to build that initial virtualization infrastructure, set up that private cloud, also prepare our faculty and staff for the impending changes. And by preparing, we mean both the training side of it as well as preparing the PCs that were in their classrooms. So we wanted to make sure if they had saved some files locally, if they had shortcuts for Internet Explorer that they didn't want to lose, that we captured that. So when it went virtual, those files and shortcuts didn't get lost. And then finally, do the actual virtualization. And then finally, do the actual virtualization, so virtualize the smartboard-connected teacher PCs. That was the initial chunk that we decided to bite off. That's where we felt the greatest amount of pain was in the district. It was teachers that wanted that better performance, and we did so in full awareness that that was also one of the trickier places to start, because it was those teacher-connected PCs that had the smartboards, the document cameras, specialized software. We could have started in libraries and labs and not run into that head-on, but the decision was made that we really wanted to give the teachers the relief as soon as we could. And I'm very happy to say that our Phase One project goals were accomplished this school year. Those smartboard-connected teacher PCs have been virtualized. We did so not without our fair share of challenges. We had some equipment challenges. Document cameras and smartboards presented us with some compatibility issues. We expected this going in. We knew that was going to be the difficult things to head into, but we were able to solve the problems or find workarounds, or at least find ways that we could get to a place where we were getting the work done. The CD and DVD players had to be moved to the server side, so where a teacher would have had a CD player or DVD player in their local PC, we found that trying to run the CD, having the servers process it, and then bring the image back to the monitor was a little bit too much, so we moved those CD-playing operations to the servers. In so doing, had to reinstall CD software, so it was a challenge that we faced. Also, local printers presented a challenge in terms of drivers and such, but so, equipment was a big thing that we bit off this phase. Happy to say we have much less new equipment to look forward to moving forward. We've seen it now, so when we go to do the labs, the libraries, no big surprises ahead. To do the scheduling and training was certainly a challenge, and I give a lot of thanks to John Cia in this regard, helping on the left side of this slide or all of the tasks that had to get done, and on the top is the weeks we had to do it in, so you can see we were busy, and it was a lot of preparation and training and helping and supporting. It was a difficult challenge, but we made it through. Preparation was a challenge, as I mentioned before, making sure that we didn't lose any locally-stored files or local Internet Explorer bookmarks or favorites. There were some specialized software packages in certain locations that we had to get to work on our virtualized environment, and some CDs had to be reinstalled for people, so the preparation was one of our challenges. And then finally, certainly the most expected challenge was just change management, just that idea that we were presenting our faculty with a new way to even get started, logging on and logging off of the PCs, so things were different. We knew they'd be different, we trained them on it, but when the rubber hit the road and they were actually working with it, that was a challenge. It was managing those new experiences. The first time they got their desktops, their virtual desktops, they had to do things like get their email set up, get their local printer set up, so those kinds of changes. And then the software itself, although they'd been trained on Windows 7 and Office 2010, going to use it can present challenges, so it's going back to how you've been trained and actually using it. And then finally, just some operational differences in the virtual world, certain functionality within document cameras, smartboards, just behave a little bit differently, so getting used to that. Now, moving forward, we're looking at expanding our infrastructure capacity, starting with our wireless and regular network infrastructure, not just the virtual infrastructure. As we move forward, we want to make sure that we don't lose sight of the fact that there's more pieces to this than just the virtualization servers, so we are exploring how to best get our network running efficiently. Also, we are expanding the virtualization side as well, obviously, because we're adding more virtual desktops, so we're going to be virtualizing our labs, libraries, and administrative offices in this upcoming school year. We're going to work to improve virtualization resiliency. We want to make sure we're adding more redundancy as we move forward, so there are no single points of failure that can knock out large areas of the network. Also, we want to create a test environment, so as we do upgrades to that infrastructure, we don't impact the day-to-day work. So, that's an upcoming phase this summer that we're going to be working on. And then, lastly, for this phase is actually upgrading clients that can't be virtualized. There are some PCs, just by virtue of what they do, that makes them difficult clients to work with in a virtual world, specifically things like drafting software. Requires so much processing locally that passing that back and forth can be a challenge. Not an insurmountable challenge, but in Phase Two, the second year that we're doing this, one that we would rather just put off for a little while longer, so we'll be upgrading them to Windows 7 and Office 2010, so their environment looks the same as all the others, it's just not virtualized. Lastly, in Phase Three, it's more expansions and improvements in that virtualization infrastructure and virtualizing or upgrading whatever remaining PCs are out there, both on the instructional and non-instructional side. That's where we are and that's where we're going.
So, with all that in place, now we can talk about what really happens in the classroom.
Right. Thank you. Okay. So, I'm going to start with some highlights from this year, and to begin with, let me just stop there for a second, and I just want to say, with all that virtualization, all the training and everything, I do want to recognize Brian Marchant-Congress, because Brian was instrumental in doing that, and he's still working with us on making sure we have all the virtualization working fine in the classroom, so I just want to say that.
Thank you, Brian.
And also, going along with that, we had our second annual technology conference this year, and we weren't able to have it for a full year, but I mean, a full day, but only for a half-day, thanks to Hurricane Sandy. So, but just to say, we still were able to do 75 sessions in that half-day, and so, Brian, along with the Library and Media Specialist and a few other teachers who are my planning team, and they did a great job, and we also had our Innovation Subcommittee members who did a lot of the sessions also, and we have three members here tonight to talk about what they've done with innovation in their classrooms. So, the other thing that we really tried to focus in on, and I'm talking about the Library and Media Specialist also, because they're part of my staff, and with Brian and also with the business classes at the high school, we looked at digital citizenship. As our students are communicating, collaborating, and doing more research online, it's really important that they're doing this in an ethical fashion, they're also using proper etiquette when they're communicating, and that they're being secure, the security, and they're being safe online. So, that's all part of digital citizenship. So, our Library and Media Specialist and, like I said, business classes, to really looked at how we could help our students understand how to do, have these skill sets, and so that was the main focus for us this year, and I think they did a great job with it, part of character at also. And we're going to continue with that, because as we move more things online, it's really important, and we've heard enough horror stories of what can happen sometimes, so that's one thing we're working on. That goes right along with the next thing, is as our technologies changed, we had to take a look again at our student acceptable use policy. So, we have been looking at this year, we have a draft ready to move forward, and it's no longer called acceptable, but responsible use policy. And that is because, again, we want to put more onus on the students if we want them to be good digital citizens, and we need to give them more responsibilities. So, that's part of what we're doing. One thing that we are ready to put in for our student handbooks this year are the supporting procedures and guidelines that I think we were a little weak on before with our acceptable use policy. So, one thing that we did is made our student technology access agreement, made it more explicit for students, and we heard that from students and teachers alike, that we need to tell them exactly what are we talking about. So, that's one thing that we have from our K up through 12th grade, and we also have looked at our personal electronic devices guidelines. We had them at the high school for two years, and we added at the elementary and middle school this year also, so people know what's expected if they want to bring a phone in or if they want to bring anything else into school. And also, we look, of course, with the Common Core, and with the Common Core, one of the things that they talk about in the Common Core is, of course, more nonfiction reading and writing, and also to have them look at more complex text, and how are you going to teach reading in your content areas? So, we look at for online resources to help support that, and again, I'll say to Brian, this is an example of what Brian did, actually made more like an online textbook for us for science in grades K through six through Discovery Education Science. So, Discovery Education Science is known for the videos that they have, but not only videos do they have, they also have interactives for students, and they have reading passages. So, what Brian did was identify reading passages for different units, like here, the life cycle of plants in second grade, for instance, and was able to have three levels. So, at each one of these, in each one of the units of science, we also have those leveled reading passages. So, that's great, and teachers have really enjoyed using them, so thank you. And we have other ways that we've been using online, too, and we'll continue with that. The other thing is, going along with digital citizenship, our students, if we want them to be able to be better online citizens, we have to give them more opportunities to do this. So, we moved Google Apps for Education also down to grades five and six this year, because we had it already from seven to 12, and so we've expanded there, and we're going to be talking a little bit more about that in a minute. Transformations with technology. I would say that, just highlight a few things. In order to target student needs, our teachers that have iPads, especially at the elementary level, found the Confer app to be fantastic to do, to help them identify where the students are with different teaching points, and I'm not going to speak more about that, because I know Katie is going to, in how she did that with kindergarten. And I know in the past, you've also heard Jess Flaherty speak about the clickers that we use as student response systems, so I'll just say that more teachers are using them for pre-assessment and to really be able to say, focus on where the kids are and to help them with pacing. And at our secondary level, in science, at the middle school, they also found that the option to be able to do paper tests with the clickers also helps them. You may think, well, that's combining the two things, but really, with being able to use the clickers, they can immediately score them, and so that means when they go back and see the kids again the next time with their lessons, they're able to address where the kids are, so you don't have to wait for your tests to come back another few days. You have them right then. And I did show you what Brian has done with the, with online leveled texts, but there's a lot of resources out there that are already leveled for us, and then eBooks, which are just electronic books. And the reason that this is, why I find those to be very beneficial, is that we buy our eBooks, we try to buy them, the nonfiction books that they're called Universal, that means that you just don't have one student check them out, they're available to everybody. So, just a stop and think for a second of the power of that. You have teachers that can choose a book, they can choose a reading passage, they can assign something, and all students can look at it that same night or during the class that day. So, it's pretty powerful. Virtualization, being able to update the applications, not only Microsoft Office, which I know that Brenda's going to speak a little bit about, how it's made an impact for her at math and Henry James, but just be able to, with the virtualization, our applications run better. If they run better and you have better reliability, you have more integration, and teachers have told us that. They feel more comfortable using the technology in their classrooms, so it's made a big impact for us there, and I think it will continue to do so. Google Apps for Education, as I said, we're going to speak a bit more about that, and instead of me just talking about it, I have a video clip of Melanie Swider, she's fifth grade at Latimer Lane, and what a difference it's made for her students, so... Hopefully, you'll be able to hear this.
They have definitely amped up the level of the work that they're doing as readers, not only because I can see it, but they're sharing it with their book club. They want to make sure that they're prepared and that they have something worthy to talk about with their conversation. My writers who are challenged with writing and that at the beginning of the year really didn't write a lot and produce a lot, just quantity-wise, they are writing unbelievably right now. It's constantly, even things I don't assign, they are doing on their own and sharing with me. They are typing faster. Even parents have commented at parent conferences of how they love Google Drive and how they've noticed that their kids' typing skills have improved, they've noticed that their kids have been writing more. Before, it was just me, they would do something and they would hand something, and to me, I would be looking at it. They actually will share it with classmates, and they will leave comments with their classmates of saying, "Can you please read this part, because I'm confused and I don't know how to make it clear," or "Can you please read this and give me suggestions of what I should add in and what thinking sense I should add in?" So, they're actually putting themselves up for their classmates of saying, like, criticize me, give me critical feedback, because I want to make this better, it's just bad motivation there. I've never seen it before, like I have this year with using Google Drive.
So, that's just one example of what impact this has made, and also, just a little bit more. She spoke about how parents have brought up about what a change is made, so I just, if you don't mind, I'd like to share from Matthew H. Humans what he had to say about this. "What struck me as the nature of the collaborative process that Google Drive seemed to engender, giving and receiving constructive criticism, especially from peers. Well, frankly, I work with professionals who still can't handle that sort of constructive back and forth. So, to see it come so easily to a gang of fifth graders, while I think stunned is an accurate word to describe my feelings. Kudos to Ms. Swider for her use of Google Drive technology." And so, let's hear from students, okay? And when you're listening to this, think of the habits of mind that are really, these students are showing. I think are very impressive. And we also have, at the end, there's another parent who is speaking about the use of Google Drive, what she saw with her student at home, and that would be...
Stephanie Leat.
Stephanie Leat.
You go home and you have to finish your essay or something, and it's always there, because I always lose my thought back to Leat's home, and you can't access the K-Drive control without it. And the other thing is, you always have your work, because over the summer, they clear out the K-Drive, but with Google Drive, you always have what you have for multiple years. With Google Drive, it automatically saves, so you don't have to worry about it not saving. Like, somebody might be on the computer, and then you have your iPad or MacBook that you can work on, because it's not that bad, because you can get it on your laptop and work on it. It's easy to get, because it's free, and it's not, you don't have to pay for it, like you have to pay for Microsoft.
With Google Drive, you can two-click on the same document, or like five or one.
Yeah, you have a certain number of them, and they have colors, and you can tell which one is which, so...
But when they're editing, and you say who's editing it?
And you can watch people, like, delete words and comment. And it's really helped me, because if I find that something in my writing doesn't sound good, with my sweater, can you just comment and tell me that I need to fix it? And it's made my writing a lot better.
And it's especially helpful when you go on to your partners and you see what they're doing, and you can comment on that, and you kind of know what you could do after looking at it, and so it kind of helps you as a writer, see other people's writing, too.
The most amazing part for me has been to see her collaborate with her friends, and comment on each other's essays along the side. She would come home, and I would see in real-time all of her friends jumping on the computer and commenting, either saying, "Great job," or "This is different," or "You should change here," or your grammar is poor, and your teacher as well would jump on, which was very exciting for Sadie, and give comments about her work and how she shaped her work. She has gotten better at composing on the computer and sort of thinking through her fingertips, the combination of using the type of word and the Google Drive has made her very comfortable in the paperwork. I'm blown away by her quickly growing ability to just figure, just like the extension of her own brain. It's amazing.
So, you stop and think, if we can start here in this grade, what we can do by the time these kids are in high school.
There you go.
And one thing is that Melanie is also a member of our Innovation Subcommittee. So, in our Innovation Subcommittee, the task they were given was to identify student needs that they wanted to address, and then to utilize a technology solution. So, you can see that one of the things that Melanie wanted to do is to increase the students' writing and also the collaboration that they would do with their writing, and so she used Google Apps for this. And they're saying Google Apps, Google Drive, they're interchangeable. And so, then made some recommendations, and one of the things is that she also said that this is very powerful, so you want to be able to roll this out and make sure other teachers are using this, and she does have a lot more access to technology, because she happens to house one of the laptop carts in her room. So, you'll see some of the other recommendations that were made from not only our Innovation Subcommittee members, but also from the Technology Conference. We do a feedback form, and so these are some of the recommendations that stood out. And one is to make sure that we have readiness before deployment, and that doesn't just mean deployment of equipment, devices, it also means deployment of things like Google Apps, programs, processes. And to do that, the readiness has to be with our curriculum. We have to make sure that the curriculum is being supported with whatever we're deploying, that our teachers are ready for this, so they have the proper training for it, and also that our system is ready for it. So, as we put more wireless devices out there, like Jason was saying, we need... So as we put more wireless devices out there, like Jason was saying, we need to make sure that our system's going to be able to handle them. iPads for teachers. Our Innovation Subcommittee members do have iPads and for the most part, everybody was very happy with what the iPads could do. We didn't start the Innovation Subcommittee until later on in the year and I think I reported that in December, that we had a little bit of a late start on that. When they talk about the teachers getting the iPads, they want to make sure that the teachers not only have training, but that they have the support to how to use them in the classroom. And our elementary teachers, we had two teachers per grade level and they were really able to get a good grasp on this and to identify what were the best apps to use and how they would use it for assessment and for instruction. So that's one thing they said you definitely need to have. Also, we have online testing coming up, I'm sure everybody's aware of that. And so with that, we need to really increase our access to devices because the kids need to have more practice with keyboarding. And that doesn't mean just going through Type to Learn. It also means being able to go and create writing directly onto the computer because that's what they are being asked to do when they're doing the online testing. So we need, if you want to have kids have those experiences, you need to have more access. And that also goes along with our math programs because our math programs that we have, some that we'll also do, like the simulations and it looks a lot like, we could make those math programs be a lot like what you're going to see on the online testing. Increased use of Google Apps by students and teachers. And I know that we heard Melanie and we heard the students talk about that. We're also going to have, Addie is going to speak more about Google Apps and what a difference it's made for her up at the high school level, too. So I'll leave that for us right now. And it's not just today that we have our technology conference, but also throughout the year, they're saying teachers need more time to collaborate. They need to collaborate, they need to learn from each other, just like those students we're talking about, how they're learning about writing better from each other. Our teachers need to do that also with about technology and what works in the classroom, the best practices. And with everything else we're talking about, it's 24/7 access to school electronic resources. I think we've been doing a better job with that. I know this year with our high school teachers, we're required to start putting their homework online. So I know students look for that and I know that the parents look for that, so they can help support their students at home. We also have with using more Google Apps, as the student said, they can access it anywhere, they can access it from home, they don't need to use a flash drive. So 24 accesses to online resources, we've been trying to do a better job with that, but it's not just a matter of the electronic online resources that we want to use more, but also make sure that we have the devices to support that 24/7. So that's another recommendation. Some students may come from a family where they have to share a resource and it might not always be if we're putting more things online, that they can get the work done at home at night. So more to come on that. So next steps. As we look at next steps, as I said, we have Google Apps, we're really trying to push that out there because we see some, we see the advantages to it. Those of you that have iPads will know that there are apps that go along with iPads and with the, with Google Apps, there's also Chrome has apps and they're all web-based. So we're looking at how we can integrate those applications altogether into Google Apps. And we also have like Turn It In, I know some students don't like that at the high school, but it actually is to help them know what they need to cite better maybe, okay? And what they need to do as far as putting things more in their own words. So they, we have a lot of different applications out there that are cloud-based and they all seem to require passwords. And so to manage all those applications, we're looking at trying to get a management system that will look more like a dashboard, so you can see everything in one screenshot. And we also think that that'll help the teachers have more of a buy-in because it will be easier for them to handle. The single sign-on, I know this is a difficult thing, Jason, I've had conversations, so it's not like you just go, oh, we've got single sign-on. It's going to take some work and we may not get everything to be a single sign-on, but we're going to do our best to make it so that you don't have to remember seven passwords or forget seven passwords each time. Because every time you forget a password, it takes all the time to go and log back on it. So, okay, we'll take a deep breath, but we're going to work hard on that this year.
It's a challenge.
And yes, and at least we'll make movement. And another thing is to expand our innovative practices, so supporting curriculum, instruction, assessment, really looking at the recommendations that I spoke about in the other slide that the teachers said they'd like to see us do. And then again, there we are, preparation for online testing. We had practice tests this year, we were involved in the practice test, so we could see how we're doing, what we may need to improve upon. And what definitely came out is that we need to do more technology embedded in the curriculum that looks like the kind of tasks the kids are going to be doing. And I spoke about the keyboarding already and especially the math that we need. And so with doing that, we don't want to have where the kids, when they come to be tested, that what we're assessing is their ability to use the technology. It has to be that we know that if we're doing English Language Arts, that we know that the test results that come back are based on what the kids understand about English Language Arts. So that's something that we really are taking, and it's not like we're just starting with this next year, we've been working on this as we've been going along with simulation software, et cetera. With that comes more access to technology. So we are looking at moving to one-to-one, device to student. I don't think that comes as a surprise to anybody because as you hear everything in the news, that's where people are heading and there's reasons for it. Even if we weren't having the online testing, scheduling has become more of a nightmare each year for the teachers because as they embrace more technology, and yes, we supply more, but we can't seem to keep up with that demand of just doing it through labs and laptop So what are we looking at for next year when we talk about accessibility to technology? This year with our Innovation Subcommittee, and again, Katie will speak to this as a kindergarten teacher, really saw that having an iPad in the classroom, and also it wasn't just from our own experience or from others' experience, other districts, that there are so many good educational apps for the primary, especially for those foundational skills for literacy. And so with that, we added five student iPads for the Innovation Subcommittee classrooms, saw a lot of success, saw success with that, just happened recently, but saw success with that enough so that we are going to move forward with the rest of K-1 with five student iPads. This year, we are going to, before the end of the school year, and I know there's only a little bit of time, we are going to be also giving the teachers the iPads, so they have them over the summer and we'll providing training also, how to use them in the classroom. Grades two and three and other ones that really did stress with us about the need to have laptop carts because we have the Type to Learn, which is more, is computer-based and also a lot of our math software applications are computer-based. And so they see a need to increase access so they can really do the keyboarding that they need. Grades four through 12, since we are moving to more Google Apps and more cloud-based, Chromebooks make sense. And why Chromebooks? I have a Chromebook. How many of you have seen a Chromebook? I hope you have, but if you haven't, Chromebooks are light. They have the keyboard, which is nice. And what you can see is I just opened this and it's coming. Don't we like that? Say, the student goes, yes, I do. So it's that quick access because of the fact that we don't have to use all the virus software, et cetera, because it's more browser-based and we don't have the same security kind of issues that we do when we're starting up a laptop. The programs we have to run in the background, we have a quicker on. So this is one of the things that we're looking to move to, to help support the classroom. So the Chromebooks, besides the fact that they have the, they're quick on, they also have an extended battery life, so we can go six. You can, it says a minimum of six hours, more like eight hours from what people have saying they've been able to do with the Chromebooks. And the login to that is just the same login that we have to their Google Apps. The other thing that I'll say that both Jason and I truly appreciate is the fact that you can manage these so much easier than you can iPads and get them deployed in a much quicker fashion. The same portal that I use to manage the Google Apps and the Chrome Apps is the same place that I manage the Chromebooks. So you can deploy things a lot quicker and you can also update them a lot quicker through here. So just like the virtualization, One Surfer, it's the same thing with the Chromebooks. So that's why we're looking at Chromebooks for the, for 412. And then the accessibility to the, for teachers' technology for iPads. Jason did speak to the fact that we can hope to have where teachers can access their own desktops at home and their drives and everything. Well, with the iPads, we can do that. The iPads have an app that allows us to do that now and our Innovative Subcommittee members have been doing that and I think that they really appreciate that. And again, Brenda will speak to that. So we're looking at, besides the fact that they can, that'll help them be able to have everything that they have at school at home, there's why iPads instead of Chromebooks? Well, the iPads also, there are fantastic apps there for the teachers as far as assessment that we don't have on the Chromebooks right now. And just also the iPad doesn't have the keyboard integrated in it, which means as you walk around the classroom, you can walk around a little bit more, you have your checklist, you can do things, you can take a picture because you have the built-in camera, you can take video if you need to take video. So to have at least one of those in the classroom is also powerful for a whole classroom to have. So what we're looking at is next year, as I said, K and one. K-1 will be having the iPads. So we're looking at grades two, six to have them have an application process and we're looking for them to apply as a team or individuals if they'd like for an iPad. Grade seven through 12, we want to build up the base by department. What we saw was that, as I said, the elementary grades, they had like two teachers per grade level to work together. At the secondary level, we had like a math teacher at, Henry James, a math teacher at the high school, you really couldn't get together. So we really didn't get a chance to build up that kind of base that we needed as far as like, what's the best app, what's the best use, how do I use it in my content area? So what the Innovation Subcommittee members did say at the secondary level is, you know, let's give a few iPads to departments, choose these people that are, that have the willingness and readiness to move on and build up that base. So when we're looking at application process in the fall, we'll probably do one in the beginning of the fall and then do another one, you know, maybe in three or four months after that. If we do find teams that are ready to move ahead in seven, 12, we can offer that to them in the next application process. Okay, now 14, 15, projected, this is what we would like to try to accomplish. We'd like to, as I said, we need to move more towards a one-to-one access. So we're going to start with one-to-one access in the school. So grades seven, eight, we can accomplish, we hope we can accomplish that through the use of our laptop carts that we already have there, the labs that we already have there and buy additional Chromebooks. And grades nine through 12, we have so many more labs up at the high school that we do in anyplace else. So we're looking at increasing a Chromebook to student two-to-one access in school that'll get us ready for the next year. And for teacher accessibility, we'll still have two through six during the application process, but we'd also like to have, we'll move seven to 12 all that way to application process. And we'd like to bring up the certified staff to a minimum of 50% if we could. And then for 2015, 16, now that's going to be our first year of our next technology plan. So what we'd like to do is be able to have, instead of just one-to-one at school, have one-to-one to take home. So we're looking at doing that seven through 12, take home with the use of Chromebooks. We're trying to be very thoughtful about how we do this and to make sure that it's something that we can manage and that the teachers can manage it. It's not just a matter of giving them the Chromebooks, we have to make sure that, as we said again, the readiness. We have to make sure the teachers are ready for this and that we know that the Chromebook is going to meet all the needs that we have. And so I think by doing this, we'll be able to know that this is, this is what we want to go with. And let's all be honest and open about this, technology changes so quickly that we want to be able to be ready that if things change, something else comes out, we can go with that, too. We don't need to be locked into something. And the beauty of going with Google Apps is that it's web-based, so you can access that from any kind of device. And again, we hope that we'll have iPads for all teachers at that time. And so you may have been thinking, what are we going to do with elementary? Well, we're hoping by that time that we will...
Virtualize our laptops.
And so that our laptops are virtualized, we'll take, we'll start moving them from the secondary down to the elementary and be able to achieve that same one-to-one in school for grades three through six. That's our hopes, plan.
Johnson, I just want to, I know we have some teachers that are going to present a little about, I just want to thank you and your team for the thoughtful presentation. And I know we've presented a lot of information and it's a lot to absorb certainly, and the look at the out-years, I think 14, 15, 15, 16 is great for me, you know, we've had discussions about it for the board as well and we'll certainly have to come back in the fall. And I think in our conversations next year as we prepare for budget, because certainly when you make a move in that direction, it has budgetary implications and there are certainly offsets that we can find in other areas as we prioritize. But, you know, we wanted to make sure the board doesn't feel we're presenting this as it's complete, certainly, but projected ideas up for conversation in the future. And I think we have a great, great starting point here. So I'm certainly looking forward to see what the teachers have to say here tonight about what's going on in the classroom. Thank you, Johnson.
One thing I'd love to at least make mention or thought, I don't know if it, I know you guys are so busy and you're so, you've got so much going on, but it might be, and I don't know how it goes about because as you said, these are a lot of ideals and plans, but we don't necessarily have them written in stone yet. But if we could get the parents on board as well, you know, we do this PD Day for teachers, it might not be a bad idea to try to do a PD Day for parents and community members so that they could, they could parallel with their students and know what their kids are doing. If we're starting to talk about new technology and stuff, there are a lot of parents who don't know what a Chromebook is, you know, I mean, I know some of this stuff, but I don't use it. PD Day for parents might be a really cool tie-in and helpful to everybody to help them buy in and know that it's a great thing for their kids.
I like that.
Good thought.
And I'll say that they also do that with a lot, I've been talking to other districts that have been rolling out iPads and also with Chromebooks and that's a big part of it, educating parents and the students.
And you know, parents like, we know our parents support our kids and we know our parents support our districts. So if they knew what the schools were doing, they could probably parallel, some people can parallel that at home as opposed to doing contradictory things at home that might, so we can all be on the same page, but it just might be a cool thing for next year.
Yeah.
And I think that's going to be a great lead-in also to something that Katie's going to talk about tonight, the communication with parents to understand what we're doing at school.
Thank you very much.
Before you...
Go ahead.
You can do it. No, I think that's a very good point. I'll save my questions, my comments for later.
Okay, so let me introduce that, and I'm going to ask them one at a time to, but just so that you know who's here tonight with us is Katie Bristol with Kindergarten from Tootman Hills, Brenda Long with math at Henry James, and Addie Rubarge, who is with Family Consumer Sciences in 30 High. So we're going to start with Katie.
Well, I've been thrilled to have the iPads in my room. I've been really impressed with how much the kids have embraced that this is a learning tool and it's a privilege and a responsibility and they've done really well with that, with taking care of them, using them the way that they're supposed to be used. So that's been really great. It's been helpful, not just for the kids to practice, to have independent practice with skills, but for me, for my instruction, for my record-keeping, and also like Johnson said, for communicating with parents. So one of the standout things I think that the iPads has helped with is to help students make that connection between language and literacy. The Common Core talks a lot about reading, writing, listening and speaking, and as much as we know, those go hand in hand. That can be really abstract for students at the primary level. So there are so many great uses of the iPad that we have been able to just provide students with a very dynamic and engaging experience to interact with language and literacy. So up here we have a screenshot from an activity that we did. This is from our how-to writing unit and so we decided to make a how-to video for my students next year about some of our routines in the day. So this particular one was our morning routine. So it was great because we had to verbally plan out our steps, we wrote them down together on chart paper, then the students reread them as they acted them out and I recorded it with iMovie and then we were able to put the words at the bottom. So you can see how there was really that interaction between all those areas of communication and it was so engaging for the students and it will also be really helpful for me next year, starting my year. It's also been really helpful in communicating with parents. I've been using an app called Explain Everything and it's just a great app to make presentations. You can animate them, you can record them. With all the changes that we've had with Common Core, I think now more than ever, we need to communicate with parents about what we're doing in the classroom. So this is an example of a video that I made for parents. Successive blending is a strategy to help students combine sounds to read words. This video will show you how successive blending works so you can support your child in using it to read his or her Just Write books. First, let's review the tapping to read strategy. With this strategy, the student taps underneath each letter of the word and says the sound that goes with that letter and then blends them together to make the word. So for example, the word tap would be t, ap, tap. Sometimes it can be challenging for students to hold on to all three sounds as they go through that tapping process. So you might see them dropping the first sound like this, t, ap, ap. Or you might hear them distorting the ending sound like, t, ap, tad. Tapping to read can be challenging for some students, though, because they have to hold on to all three sounds and put them together. That can be hard for them to hold in their working memory. Successive blending allows the children to slowly build the word so that they can hold on to the sounds. on to the sounds. For successive blending, the student starts by just looking at the beginning sound. For the word tap, that would be t. Next, the student moves on to the second sound and works on putting the first two sounds only together. So the student would say, t, ap, tap. Now that the student has combined those first two sounds, they are able to look at those first two sounds as one unit, in this case, ta. Finally, the student will add that last sound to the first unit, ta, tap. So here's how successive blending would look altogether.
So I'm going to stop there.
You can see how that's much more effective than trying to explain that strategy via an email or a newsletter. It can be very abstract or complicated, but I got a lot of responses from parents that, that was a really, they really understood how to use it and how to reinforce it with their child at home.
And I know when Katie spoke to me about this before, she said it's been really helpful, especially with full-day kindergarten, to explain to them what full-day kindergarten is about, what we can do with them.
And moving forward, having the iPads from the beginning of the year, next year, there's so many more presentations that I can send out to parents, even simple things like how we do our letter formation, so that parents know how we do it, and so that they can even show it to their child at home to reinforce it with them. Another use has been during our learning centers, using the iPads. And again, now that we have five, I can put one at each of our five learning centers, and that's been very effective. The challenge of learning centers is that the students have to, it's an independent work time, so we have to find activities that can kind of self-correct, so that if the students were just doing flashcards with their sight words, for example, and they were looking at the word c and said she, they wouldn't really have a way of knowing that they were saying it wrong. But the apps will have a self-correcting feature, like this is a favorite app of ours for our sight words. It reads the words aloud, the students can read it along, they can trace it with their fingers, they can record themselves reading the word. There's so many ways the students get feedback about whether they're reading the word correctly or not, so that's been very helpful. And the Confer app, as John C. mentioned before, has been amazing. It has changed my instruction this year. Record-keeping with your conferring with students during reading and writing can be very cumbersome sometimes. Finding a system with tabs and binders and all kinds of paper, and then trying to group your students based on their areas of need, flipping back and forth throughout a binder, it can just be very time-consuming and very difficult to manage. But with the Confer app, I can easily group my students by their areas of need as I've taken my notes. So you can see here with the screenshot, I can quickly look and say, oh, I've got three students who need to work on retelling, and I can quickly grab those students for a small group, for some small group instructions. The other benefit that we recently discovered was that you can share your teaching points with other teachers, you can link your accounts with them. So across the district, kindergarten teachers can share what we're working on and what we're focusing on in reading and writing at any given time, which is so, so helpful because we're spread out, so anytime we can communicate and collaborate, it's just so helpful.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Katie.
Very neat. And I have Brenda Long.
Hello.
Hi, Brenda.
I was very fortunate to be part of the virtualization rollout team, so I was one of the first teachers to get it. And immediately, I noticed the benefit. It was, the processing was much quicker, so you didn't have that delay in your classroom instruction. And I often like to pull things from websites or from YouTube and watch clips. And in the current world, it would get hung up, but in the virtual world, I was able to watch it seamlessly. And additionally, if I had a problem, it was a matter of sending a quick email to Jeremy, and I think I would log off and five minutes later, it would be fixed. So there was no request being put in, so I found that extremely helpful to be in the virtualized world, and I think I was the building cheerleader about it. It was very, very exciting.
Shows well.
As far as the iPad's concerned, my productivity has increased because the Confer, it was a great way to centralize all my notes. So if I was walking around the room and noticing that certain students were struggling, I could take a note on that and make sure I circled back with a student. I would also use the iPad to let a student work on an individual skill. So if I saw they were struggling, I could sign them onto Khan Academy, maybe during homeroom or extra help, and they could kind of work through it. I also like the ability to take pictures of work and kind of save it and show it to them later, show it to other people, and hide the names that I could share the work with other people, or refer back to it myself. So the Confer app has been fantastic. But my favorite piece, I think, of the iPad is the fact that you can connect to your network at school. So I can go home and I can be like, oh, I have a great idea for a lesson, sign on to my desktop essentially, and set up my entire lesson for the next day, and when I come to school, all my files are open, my smart notebook is open, and everything's right in there. So I have found that to be truly, truly efficient. And in that, in the virtualized worlds, we have Microsoft Office 2007, and as a math teacher, the equation editor is so important. Before, you'd have to print things out, like add division signs or whatever the case may be, but it's all in there, everything that you could imagine for writing equations. So the equation editor has been fantastic, and I can access that from home if I want to write up a warm-up or something that just kind of came to mind. And I walk in the next day, turn on my computer, and there's my warm-up. So it's fantastic from that standpoint. With my students, you know, math is a lot about skills, being able to apply concepts, you know, two plus two, three plus three. But with the Common Core, it's about understanding, what are we doing? Why are we doing this? Where did it come from, and how am I ever going to use this? So what I've been doing in the classroom is utilizing the laptops often and bringing them in, and we'll have group work, where students will create a lesson, and they'll have to complement each other. I've had them like reserve a portion of the room and use the whiteboard and record it. They're actually creating lessons on math concepts that they present to the students. So I can record it with my iPad so that we can then give feedback on certain portions and play it back. We've had Prezi presentations, Zunal presentations, iMovies, PowerPoints, but it's great because the students are empowered to research the concept, where did it come from, what does it mean? Then they also have to give a real-life application, so would I use this in engineering, would I use it in the medical field or in the stock market, where would I use it? And then they also provide the lesson, so they have the math concept in there as well, and they're the ones who are running the show. And, you know, I kind of plant myself in the audience and ask the baiting questions now and then. But it's great to see them empowered to teach their peers. We've had, one of the projects that I did this year was Wiki. I wanted them to work collaboratively outside of the classroom, so I assigned groups, and they had to pick a topic, and they had to collaborate and create a Wiki page. So I could see all the discussion going back and forth. While you didn't solve that correctly, if you did this, then I think it would be more accurate. So the students kind of gave feedback online, which was fantastic, and they, they created a webpage, complete with real-life examples, and, I mean, they were fantastic. We could look at each other's work and we could critique it and edit it. So we've done a lot of work online with different applications. And I'm so impressed when they can stand up and present a lesson and just accurately explain it to their peers along with the application. So we're really getting to the why, not just the how. I'm looking forward to, like, next year, bringing some of these ideas to the high school, and I, what is that, Explain Everything is something that I'm hoping to get into. So there's so many great ideas that we can use and put into the classroom, and the kids want it, which is exciting. So they're looking for this information, and they're looking for the technology. So Khan Academy has been a big one that I've used. If we're in the classroom and they're just, you know, they just, they get it, but they want more practice, well, if they can interact online, watch online tutorials, sometimes they can get that one explanation that helps. And I encourage them, you know, I've given you an explanation, try Khan Academy and come back and let's chat about it. And along with the Khan Academy lesson, you also have examples that the students can practice and hints that take you along the way. So it really reinforces what we do in the classroom. So I think I've been a big cheerleader for the Innovation Committee, I'm really enjoying it, so, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And, yes. And I have Addie Robarge, and Addie's up at the high school.
Yep. So I teach Family and Consumer Sciences at the high school, and this year, at the Technology Conference, I did actually give an abbreviated version of this to the teachers to sort of act as the cheerleader for Google Drive at the high school. So this first slide is geared towards teachers, but really framed around some of the problems that, well, I won't say problems, I'll say scenarios that I encountered as a teacher and that were sort of solved by Google Drive for me. So a couple of the things in terms of, for a while there, I was shared between two buildings, and in Family and Consumer Sciences, we often teach in different rooms, so we're not always planted at the same desk all day. So Google Drive solved that for me. Some other things that we encountered that have sort of been solved by the virtualization, but still, I appreciate Google Drive and Google Chrome for this, is sometimes we encountered slow load times for Microsoft Word, or our desktop, or sometimes we lose our P drive, or you could possibly misplace your flash drive. Google Drive saves you from some of those things. Also, I am one of those people that gets sick of making mountains of copies for my students, so this saves me from having to do that as well. Also, when, when students are absent from class or school, especially for an extended period of time, this solves that for them as well. They have access to all the work that we've done in class without me having to put together a folder and a parent not having to come in to pick it up or a friend. Finally, it provides an opportunity for students to be able to collaborate and work on a group project without being in the same place, so I'll talk about that a little bit more. And lastly, if you're like me, and sometimes you get sick of all the questions that Internet Explorer asks you, if you're sure you want to do this, and do you want to say this first, Google Chrome will save you from that as well. So those are some of the benefits for teachers. These are the benefits from, for students, and I will tell you that I did survey, although informally, my students in class that have been using it the whole year. So some of the things that they listed that they really enjoy about Google Drive are, and Google Apps, are that they never lose their work. So as we've heard, no matter where you open it, everything you have that you've done is there. And in the case of Google Apps, like we have at, in Simpson Republic Schools, we have access to Mail, Drive, and Calendar, which are three different apps in, under sort of the Google App overhang, but they work together. So if I share a document with my students through Drive, then I can send them an email through the same account, and it will open it in Drive for them. Same thing sort of with the calendar as well, I can link to a document to the Drive or send them an email to invite them to do something on the calendar. So it's intuitive in that way, in that it all works together, so they're not separate accounts. They can collaborate with their peers on their own time, so as we know, our, especially at the high school, our students' time is very limited, so they bristle when you ask them to work on a group project. So they appreciate when you give them an opportunity to be able to collaborate, not just in the classroom, and not expect them to have to get together, you know, actually in person, so they can do it over the Internet. It saves changes and edits by user, so if I do put them in a group with other students and one of them is not necessarily carrying their, their workload, I could easily see, and they could show me that, that the changes and the edits are not being made by that one person, so you don't run into the same problem where you're trying to assess which student did the most work and that kind of thing. They can make easy uploads from other programs and drives, so if they create a document in Microsoft Word, they can easily upload it to Google Drive with no problem, and it transfers and it doesn't turn into all that gobbledygook that sometimes you have that problem if you're, if you're transferring programs. As a teacher, I can, they can share it with me, and then I can review and make assessments and, like we've heard, make track changes or comments on their work, and so then they could make real-time changes from that without them having to hand me a paper copy of something and me having to write it down, it's a lot faster. Finally, they can log on and work anywhere, so off of, they can get a Google Drive app on their phone, their desktop computer at home, school, they could even work on it on the bus, I figured. So really, anywhere that they have access to Google Drive and the Internet, they can work on whatever they need to. I talked about being absent, and then the format, so for those of you who haven't used Google Drive before, the format is very similar, sort of modeled after, after Microsoft products, and that is, you know, you have the dashboard across the tops, file, and the other suggestions for what you need to do. It's a lot more simplified, so for some of my students where in Microsoft PowerPoint, there are a lot of different options for the things that you can do, this is, in a nice way, it's more basic, and it really gives you the opportunity just for what you need. I mean, you can jazz it up if you need to, but you don't have to, and it's not hard to figure out the way to just come up with a classic professional presentation. These are some of the things I use it for in my classroom. So I have a class calendar that I embed to my website and avoid using Final Site's calendar, I'm probably getting in trouble for saying that. But the great thing about having a class calendar on Google is that I can easily edit it and make the changes, let's say, on my phone, and then it automatically posts to my website. I don't have to publish or re, I don't have to do anything else except make the change and it goes right to it. I keep running presentations for my different classes for daily lesson plans so that when I go back to teach that course again next year, I have a record of everything that I did and, you know, my daily slides for the class. I'd say 95% of the student assignments that I give are shared over Google Drive with the students, and then in some cases, I print them, but really, it, it has saved a phenomenal amount of paper. And also, for students who aren't necessarily as organized as they should be, then they never lose it as well. So I could give them a big packet and share it over Google Drive, and they, they have access to it as long as I leave it open for them, so they're never losing it. This is the link that works, the survey. So at the end of the semester, I, I often collect student surveys of, okay, you know, things you enjoyed about the class and that kind of thing, and Google Drive offers you their version, it's called Google Forms, so this is an example of that, this is from the fall. It's just my survey from Cultures and Cuisine, so. And it will collect, so students can take the survey, you hit submit, I'm sure some of you have done this before, and then it will collect all that data for you. Do we go back to this one?
I'm just hit the X.
Yeah, sorry. Finally, for those of you who don't know, I am one of the sort of co-facilitators for the school garden at both Henry James and the high school. So with my colleagues, seven through 12, we have a lot that we have to try and organize as far as planting and who's doing what at the different schools, so Google Drive has helped us organize that, in addition to other topics as well. But especially with that, it's been really helpful to be able to collaborate with people in different buildings and not just over email. Once I update the spreadsheet, then they can go in and check it right away. Finally, I care deeply about sort of digital hoarding and not just teaching my students how to be organized in their binders and their backpacks, but also in sort of their file management and what is a professional drive look like, so how can they be more organized digitally? So I use it for organizing that, teaching them that. Google Apps are fast, intuitive, and efficient. I tell my students, if you think you should be able to do it on Google Drive, you probably can. So the opportunity for them to really become independent learners of different technology, I think, is a great opportunity that they have with Google Apps because it is not so difficult to access or learn without someone there to directly teach you about it. So obviously, I give them direct instruction about a lot of the different apps, but a lot of it, they are able to figure out sort of on their own when I'm not necessarily there. So I think it's a good practice in learning technology when you don't necessarily have a teacher right in front of you. And then these were the suggestions I made for teachers during that presentation. Many of my colleagues, I think, get overwhelmed when we roll out new technology, or we just give them one PD experience in it, so I just gave a couple suggestions to them for things that I think worked for me when I was trying to take on Google Drive, and now I will tell you that I use it in all my classes almost exclusively. And that was just things like, you know, try one thing and use it for one week in one class, so I'm just going to commit to this assignment and do it on Google Drive and make it happen. And then just other stuff, shape one student assignment about an app you want to work with. Finally, ask yourself, would this be more efficient with Google Apps, because the answer is probably yes. So it just takes time to learn. I think that's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Addie.
So I think you see from the three people that are here, that the Innovation Subcommittee, really, we've got spectacular teachers, and I'm going to include Brian in that also, that really have made a difference and continue to. And they're the ones that are going to help us as we move, as we move ahead, to be able to do this, like I said, in a thoughtful way, and to really be there, help other teachers and be that support for them. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a, well, first of all, I'll open up to my colleagues for questions, comments.
Great presentation. Great presentation. Once again, you've succeeded in making us all feel like technological Neanderthal.
Thank you, Mike.
We get farther and farther behind as the years go by.
Well, maybe Addie can help us. What did you say, you organize your students?
I'm a total organizer. Absolutely, oh, yeah.
Maybe we should be coming to your class, so you can show us how to better organize our-
You're invited to come to our next Technology Conference.
Yes.
Johnson, I just think the work of the Innovation Subcommittee and the way that you're creating that shared vision of where we want to go with this is going to be so helpful for us and the board as, as we plan next steps and how to financially support those steps into the future. So, thank you, everybody, for your time and efforts, and it's really neat to see what's going on in the classroom.
But of the three of you who are guests and are using it in the classroom, of your peers, what percentage of your peers do you think are jealous that you are doing this, and you're, you've got your thumbs on it, you know, and you're really in the trenches with it, and how many of them are just like, "You guys are crazy"?
I can answer first. Um, I would say that a large portion of my peers feel like they need more time to learn how to do it, that they're not comfortable just sort of going out there into the world and out, you know, I think they're nervous about going into the classroom and saying, "Okay, we're going to use Google Drive here. I don't know that much about it myself." So I think they want more time to, like, commit and direct instruction about it.
I know my grade level team at Tewin is very excited at the prospect that they'll get iPads next year for their classroom, um, but I know some other teachers are, again, are a little weary, just, I think, more at the primary level of the management of the iPads, but I think with the slow rollout that we did this year, one iPad to start and then adding more as the year went on was really effective.
And I think when you have the champion of possibly that team or that grade level in that school that serves as the model, people jump on much faster. And when, if you don't have that, it's almost better, yes, I don't necessarily want to know, but when you have that, it spreads like wildfires, because they realize that not only is it better for themselves and organization and saving time, but kids get to create and collaborate and own the learning, which is huge. And when, when the teacher sees that, they know they have to do it.
Well, it's nice to see that these are, you guys are all very open to being asked questions and supporting your peers, so that's, that's really important, too.
I think that the teachers are excited about it, but they're kind of nervous about it, how I manage it, how it changes my instruction. Um, and in, like, math, I kind of consider it's a different animal, because you don't have, it's hard to enter math equations on a Google Drive and share it, so you really have to find different uses for it. So, um, I think as we explore new websites and explore new ways mathematically and share, hopefully I'll expose the enthusiasm, more people will kind of jump on board with it. But I know they want to, but they, they're kind of nervous about it.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry.
I have a few comments, um, on this. First of all, um, I'll, I'll go back to some individual. Um, Katie, when you, um, talked about before, it was very interesting, because you talked about the benefits of, um, All Day K, which I think I'm always thinking in terms of how do we, um, present to the public, you know, we're always thinking in terms, when budget is passed, but, you know, no sooner than November will come, and we will start to, um, craft a new budget, hopefully be passed next, uh, next May. So you talked about the benefits of All Day K, which I think is really important, showing, um, depicting how your students are, are doing this in the K. And also, I think another key piece that you had mentioned was, um, having that time to meet with your colleagues across district, across grade level, which is very, very important, because that is something you don't get to do very often, and, and, you know, you are, because you are in your individual schools. So that alone itself really is an important factor in, in what you're doing. Um, and Brenda, I'm a real fan of Khan Academy. I mean, it's, I'm a big fan, so that is one, one area that I'm glad that, that you're doing that, and, uh, again, this is all in, in, I think, in terms of going back to what Tara was mentioning before, and back to what we were talking about, maybe come fall, for, you know, um, a community conversation, you know, with parents about technology, where we're going, you know, in terms of, of what you're doing, because we learned quite a bit tonight in this presentation, and, and, you know, we have a lot more questions. We probably can't answer, going back to what Mike was saying, because we don't even, I mean, or ask, because we're not even sure what to ask. Um, and, and Addie, can you send us the benefits? That was a very good slide, a very helpful slide, benefits to students and benefits to, to teachers. And, and, um, I, I think that was real important. In fact, I wish I had those two slides when I was testifying at the Capitol for legislators, and, and I will take back, I'm always thinking now for next year, for next budget season at, at the Capitol, when we start talking about this, of what I can present, and, uh, coming from a district, coming from teachers, coming from a classroom, to present to legislators, because this is all going to be part and parcel, to, to a particular bill that, and, and I won't bore you with the rest of the bills about ECS and funding, but there's one particular bill, um, and, uh, I had an opportunity to testify to, it was an Act Unleashing Innovation in Connecticut Schools. And within that, they talked about, during the testimony in, in a couple of the areas, about learning-based portfolios, and, and going back to what you had mentioned about transforming teaching, um, through, through learning, and a big piece of it, I remember getting questioned, was about the technology, the technology, the technology, the technology. How is that going to be, um, you know, established in districts, you know, for, for, for students, going back to the, the teaching and the learning, the common core? So these are good pieces, you know, as we put forward for the next budget year, both on state level and also on, on district level. Um, another piece of that bill, which is very interesting, only because I'm thinking of, of the, the questions that were asked, was about the technology. Um, there's going to be a new task force, there's always task force being, um, you know, commenced at, at the, um, state level, about education mandate reliefs, and for high-performing districts, and I do remember them talking about, in, in response to the mandates that have come through education reform, with the technology pieces, and the high, and we are classified as a high-performing district, and that is one area that, um, I, you know, I wish to bring forward about the technology area that would help us and other high-performing districts in the state, and what we're doing with the whole Innovation Subcommittee, the whole technology, as you go through with, um, with, with what you're doing, so. Um, and the other piece of it, too, is, I know, Johnson, you mentioned the challenges, and, and, but, uh, you've, you've really seemed to overcome some of the challenges, I think all of you have, with, with what you're doing. I love the Chromebooks, I'm, I'm, I'm sold on Chromebooks, but, um, but, um, they're, they're great, and, and I think the challenges with the common core are going to be something, too, that is going to also have to be explored, but also something that, you know, you're teaching your teachers, you're teaching your students, is teaching a community. And the reason why I say that, I'll circle back to that as we go through budget, budget time, it's about budget, and it's also teaching a community what technology means in a school district, in a school system, and, which in terms to, to budget, infrastructure, everything for our schools, so. So, um, we look forward to, to conversations.
Absolutely.
Very good conversations about this, and, uh...
Thank you very much, it's a great year, a great way to end.
Very much so.
Thank you for coming tonight, too, and giving us extra time of yours, we really appreciate it.
Good. Great.
Addie really has to...
Thank you.
Computer recording classes.
Thank you, Jason.
Now, I, I just have a question, who's my Chromebook?
Who took the Chrome?
Katie has it, Talia. Katie's getting used to it. Also. Very, very good. Alrighty, let's just left with the students, the students and, and us. What'd you think of that, uh, presentation about technology? I know you're graduate, no, you're graduating. You're graduating, you're still here for another year.
I thought it was very good, and I know, like, with, um, Google Drive, I use that all the time, just today I presented two presentations using it, so personally, I love it.
Good, 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 and, and you two will have the benefit, again, of another year. Any comments on, on what's coming forward?
Yeah, I also use Google Drive a lot. Um, I know, it's not integrated with a lot of my classes right now, I don't think I have to use it for any of them, but I still do, just because it's convenient and it's accessible. Like, I know, we had a presentation for AP Chem today, and I was able to, I just used Google Drive for it, and it was easier than having to put it on the Game Drive.
Good, good.
Same for me, like, you just avoid having to email it to yourself, or use Flash Drive, or, you know, less chance of failure.
That's good to hear.
Also a lot faster, because the computers themselves are cooler.
That's good, that's, 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 that's good, that's good, that's good to hear, um, from you students, and you're very fortunate that, you know, you've had teachers that have also, you know, been there for you, and, and have also brought that, you know, technology piece to, to, to your, uh, to your years at Simsbury Public Schools. So with that, um...
Can I say something? I'd just like to thank Kristin, because it's her last meeting with us, and thank her for her representation of her classmates, she did a great job, we really appreciate having you here.
Thank you.
And you, your thoughts and opinions were very important to us.
Thank you.
Yes, Kristin, Tara stole my thunder, but yes, thank you very, very much for, for your, uh, for two years of service, and, um, you will be missed, and we hope that, uh, serving on a board as a student rep has, has been all that you thought it would be coming forward, and we look forward to, to Jacob and Patrick joining us next year, and, uh, we will, uh, have another exciting year of many, many challenges ahead of us, but, uh, hopefully you'll be able to, uh, to gain what you have gained this year. So, great, and best of luck to you, graduation, we'll see you at graduation, and best of luck to you in, in your upcoming endeavors.
Thank you.
Very good, so. Uh, with no one, uh, really, in the public audience, it's our second public audience, um, I would like to have a motion to adjourn for executive session.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Right, and our next Board of Education meeting will be September tenth, twenty thirteen, here in this conference room, and, uh, before I, before I dismiss the board, I would like to give a very big thank you to Simsbury Public, um, Community Television for their year of service to our Board of Education, for all their tapings, um, coming here and, even in bad weather, and, and setting up for us, and, and we do appreciate all that they have done, and this is live, and as you know, they do run it, um, throughout, uh, throughout the, throughout the week, so, thank you very much, SCTV, for all your volunteering hours that, uh, that you give to us, and, and with that, you know, they're always looking for, for members to help volunteer, and donations are always accepted. If you like the programs that you do see, such as ours, then, um, please support SCTV. And with that, motion to adjourn? We're going to executive session, thank you.